So where are we at on time? We got a few minutes. Is Justin chiming in? Okay. He will now open the Estacada City Council workshop. We have the rest of the wastewater facility plan review. You're coming back to us with new and interesting information, is that right?
Certainly, interesting for me. Good information for everyone.
Good. Well, go ahead and take it away and we'll try to get as much of this in as we possibly can.
Excellent. Kurt MacLeod with Kurt MacLeod Engineers. So the last month, we had a workshop where we talked, we had a city council meeting actually, talked about the location of the wastewater plant. So the feedback I got told me that you were interested in looking at alternative sites. So what I've done, and I think each of you have received in your packet probably electronically, I modified the facility plan and I tried to make all the edits either in a strikeout or in red text. So you can see what I have evaluated and included. And then tonight, what I wanted to do is bring, I brought to you a summary sheet. I left each of your places. That just shows the four locations that we were contemplating and each component of all the impacts to the collection system and to the wastewater treatment plant. So what I thought we'd do is just walk through each of those, although I don't know if you have questions on the facility plan, on any of the edits of the facility plan, we want to talk about that first. But okay, well, the papers I brought you tonight, the first page is just a summary of all the cost estimates for each alternative. And then the second one, I made a plate that shows the locations were just arbitrary, but I stopped at Hypal Road as one location, stopped at Folsom Road as the second location. So it shows the existing treatment plant site. It shows that site in the industrial park that we had contemplated also along Farmstead Road. And then the second page I brought you, just to give you some orientation as to where these pump stations and facilities are throughout the city. So both of these plates are in the facility plan. So what I've done is broke down all the costs of the entire one to five year CIP. So the bottom line, you can see on the cost summary sheet is what the city investigative should anticipate for in the next five years that you're going to need to undertake. So I have four different sites. The first is the existing shops site, which we talked quite a bit last month. Second one is the industrial park site. That would be if we were to purchase property along. Generally, it was, we thought that along Farmstead Road, there was a 27 acre parcel that the property owner was very interested in working with the city. So that was where we contemplated the site would be. The third would be if we just continued north to Hypal Road and then continuing further north to Folsom. So both Hypal and Folsom are outside the urban growth boundary. So they're, they're a long range concept. So it's really a holistic approach at where you place your wastewater plant. It's the kind of thing that as we're doing your plant now, we wish maybe that discussion had occurred 40 years ago, 50 years ago. But you have the opportunity now to think ahead for the next 50 years. The topography of all the ground from the industrial park all the way to Folsom is ideal for just laying a gravity trunk sewer. If you were to place a gravity trunk sewer, it allows us to eliminate some of the pumping improvements that are in the facility plan now. It also allows you to serve all of that area. So if your annexations of the, into the UGB extend north, all of that can be served by gravity. So that's a, it's a real benefit. That has a cost to it though. So as you go through these four columns, you see our first column is at the existing shop site. I put an asterisk on land cost because if we didn't use that land, we potentially could relocate the public workshops. And I had estimated a value of about $2 million for that riverfront property, eight plus acres. So the bottom line is that one to five year CIP is about 19.6 billion. And if, if we were to use that, we would need that to work selling that land. Does that have an impact? It's quite as hard to quantify what that affects. We've had that same opportunity for shops on that site. So if there was pressure to develop riverfront property, that something for relocation of workshops to salvage that land. The second site, we talked a little bit about last month, that's the industrial side along Farmstead. We have the same cost on all four calls for the treatment plant. When we move into the industrial park site, we're buying land that's inside the urban growth boundary. So that I put a $2 million high tide on, that's $200,000 an acre, anticipating we would buy 10 acres of property. And in that fact, we was to locate public works shops there. And that would free up the existing water plant site and the public workshops. And when I estimated $2 million for the public works shop sign, I had anticipated a portion. The bulk of the oddback would be to our expenses to reclaim them. So I have money invested in the demo to exhibit concrete basis and the entire wastewater plant. Moving the wastewater plant out, I think our net values too much. So as you go down the list, you can see that if we go to the industrial park side, we have, let me explain, you can mind items in the far left of the columns. The treatment plant self-explanatory, the land cost self-explanatory. The wastewater treatment plant pump station, that's if we relocate the plant from where it is now, we would need one major pump station at that location. But I call that the wastewater treatment plant pump station. So you see that pump station is required if all options except it would yield that to shops. That was 3.1 million dollars. And there's details of all the costs. Each one is broken. The next one down is the Timber Park pump station. And if we, these are the existing plant with the existing Timber Park pump station. We don't have any cost, but if we send our flow north to the industrial park or beyond, then we have to constitute modifying the Timber Park pump station. And I just said it wrong. We have the same cost on all four options. So under the first option, the treatment plant is at the existing public workshop site. We still have to upgrade the Timber Park pump station. It's a pasty, we'll donate out to it for a 20 year project. But if we go to the industrial park side or to Hypal or all with Folsom, Timber Park still gets modified. It's a little different complication. The next one down is the Northwest UGB pump station. So the urban growth boundary was expanded some years ago. Then brought inland and below what the campus pump station could serve. So to serve that, we simply need a pump station down at the far north edge of the industrial park. Maybe the northwest corner would be ideal. And what we anticipate is building a new station or either if we use the Farmstead roadside or if we use the existing public workshop site, you can see on my website. If we go further north than Hypal or Folsom, we can serve the entire industrial park by ground. So under, under all four options, we plan to abandon the campus pump station. So we would abandon that station and build a new gravity line for all of that existing system to the far north corner of the urban growth boundary for the pump station. So under the existing shop site and the industrial park side, they both would be a pump station. Under the, anything further north of the urban growth boundary, we can serve by ground. Next one is a raw sewage pump. So that's a pump station we anticipated would be at the sewage plant. So right now, we have, if you're planning a plant, the first thing you have is a raw sewage pumping chambers. They would be integrated to the, with the plant. We would need that if we were to build a plant at the existing shop site. If we were to put the plant at the industrial park on Farmstead, you would not, so what? Put the plant at that location, we had to discharter our horsemen right in the treatment plant. So the wastewater treatment plant pump station, the Timber Park pump station, which those two emerging were common. And then the Northwest Urban Growth Battery pump station. It would all actually be a horseman. We put the plant anywhere we want industrial park with those horsemen. We'd actually pump right up into the top of the thing. So you don't need the pump station at this way, at the new wastewater treatment plant site. So that, that was a million three for that station. You do need it for, if we leave the station on the workshop site or if we go north of the UGB, we'd have a gravity pipeline heading to the north. And then at some point, we have to lift it up into the base at the construction. Next one down is the gravity truck main. So at the existing shop site, that's one of the big benefits. There's no trunk main required. Very minor, we're going to build a pipeline across the street. It's all in that public workshop site. If we go to the industrial park, it's like I mentioned now, you don't have a trunk main because the pump station forced right into the new treatment plant and the cost of the pump station included horsemen to that location. But if we go to Hypal or to Folsom, where we can now collect the industrial park by ground and collect all the area north of the UGB by ground. We have a new trunk sewer. So to Hypal, I don't have the footage. I think it's 9,000 feet of holes, probably about half of that. So the cost, we have a million five to get to Hypal. We have a 2 million seven to get to Folsom. That includes purchasing easements along the way and the construction of other large grounds. Then the last item of the, of the project was the River alcohol. Of course, if we leave the plant where it is, we use, reuse the existing alcohol. If we go to any other site, we can build a new alcohol. So the industrial park site is a challenge that we have. Minimal operations across the street, we have several things. We've got, we may be able to come back to the, this downstream of the dam. One of the benefits that you're aware of, if any of these other three sites, the industrial park or the water, we discharge downstream of the dam, which is like, however, our alcohol meets the water quality standard. So it's not a big issue wherever you go. So the River alcohol, you see on this other plate I provided to you, the orientation of the river versus, this is a rough spot on Hypal and Folsom. So Folsom has an advantage and it's quite a close river compared to Hypal. Hypal also has a large residential area along the river that certainly would want to avoid. So at the location on the industrial park, you see it's rather close also, river. We have to go to the north and catch that little hotspot of the river. So when you consider just the treatment plant, the summary of costs or for the existing shop site, I have a summary full of 8995. The industrial park site, 2287. We've got a $1 million difference. Existing site or the industrial park site. And then if you go to Hypal, we're buying quite a bit more capacity and planning for the future. So we have a cost of 25 to. And then if we go all the way to Folsom, we're at 24. The difference in those two is the alcohol cost is better in Folsom than in Hypal. Then the one other thing I put on the summary sheet is what we see happening right now is the development along Eagle Creek and along Deuce Road. So we're seeing the Northbrook subdivision at Newton Estates, which will mandate that we get the Eagle Creek pump station built, which is maybe 1,000 feet or 500 feet short of Deuce on Eagle Creek Road. So we, we know that's going to be needed in the next few years. But I included that in a one to five year capital. Which on the bottom there, you see all four of those schools. Let me just also say too, that I've had, just this last week, we received a schedule, Taylor City received a schedule for the second phase of the industrial park. Industrial Park three, I think they call it, they received phase two of industrial park. But they had anticipated sewer. So I don't know if the only way they're going to get sewer service is with that Northwest UGB pump station. So I don't know what they're thinking, but I think that the plan review at this point is simply going to say that there's a sewer service. I've also heard discussions of service further north, beyond the space two of the industrial park, which would also require the pump station to serve. And also phase one of the industrial park three, better proved, there's other construction now. They have about, I think, four lots, maybe six lots. They could not be served by gravity, but they have put in, one in the interim, they have put in a small individual hydrant pumps, which force pain back to the gravity sewer that's been served by the campus pump station. There were certain sea pressure in the Northwest industrial area, Northwest urban growth boundary area. Who perhaps see that Northwest UGB pump station, we need for that in the near future calls. So I can give you also one more kind of a whole listing overview. If we see development pressures in the Northwest industrial area, if we see that changing, then we would probably rethink the Eagle Creek pump station, the $700,000 project, and perhaps divert that fund to building a gravity line across the highway and go to build the Northwest Industrial UGB. We can combine both of those. The only reason we have Eagle Creek pump station in our town is that now is because growth pressures from Eagle Creek east were in. So we see a water development from Eagle Creek.
I'm really interested in that Folsom drop because of the fact there is no residential anywhere near that. Your drop is 1,900 feet to the river, which is always nicer the closer it is, obviously. And for future growth, knowing that Deuce is right up here with all that, like you said, it, to me, it's a no brainer. I mean, Folsom looks to be the least impactful and at the same time, the most needed at this point, since we're looking at the growth in that general area. But that's just my opinion. I mean.
So if we, if we were to move to Hypal or Folsom, that gravity trunk is going to have to go through. I mean, it looks like there's a lot of different properties between there and there. How much of a, how much of a hindrance, how much of an issue do you think that's going to be getting, you know, getting all of those property owners on board with us running a gravity trunk through their property?
It's difficult. I think the cost of that company is maybe 200 bucks or I think maybe 300 at this stage. I've got to negotiate with property. However, when you do that, what you're building is future centers to work service in that area. So anyone out there interested in multi community coming to the city and developing, that's providing the infrastructure for them to do. So I would think that a lot of the property owners would be interested in that. Maybe some who simply don't want to be part of the city, don't want. So yeah, it certainly would be a challenge. And it would be time to negotiate.
Is there property available on Folsom Road at all that we can negotiate with or not?
You know, I haven't looked at any availability of property. So I think there's, there's probably property available, negotiating something that's beneficial for both.
Not really a question, more of a statement and a request from city staff. I guess when I look at the map and I look at the idea of where to put, I mean, any of the three options outside of what our existing shop is, I see neighbors who we don't represent. They don't have an opportunity to vote for us. And I would really feel beside myself if we made a decision to put a wastewater treatment plant around any of these neighbors on Farmstead or up on, by Hypal or up by Folsom, without getting their input, especially since they don't have an opportunity to vote up for us as representatives. But we're going to make decisions that benefit or that impact their property. And I would really like to get more involvement from the neighbors on Folsom, Hypal and Farmstead before I'm comfortable making any decision on how to proceed.
I agree with her on that one. Getting the input from them is actually quite important for them to put something on their property. So no matter where we put it, it's going to, no matter where we put it, it's going to cause some disruption, but please have them given a chance to say.
Is, is getting community input, is that part of the negotiating process for the easements?
Certainly. I think that'd be the best way to go for it. They pulled the meetings, but I know what was thinking. We have had feedback from the property owners across the street on Farmstead. But they generally are hoping to see the wastewater treatment plant in the area. We understand that. That's the interest in that. They have commercial interests involved as well, whoever that's. So everyone's going to have the same concern. So I mean, the key would be to try to locate as far away from any residential as possible, maybe even further than Folsom. But it's a challenge. No matter what you do, it's a challenge. But that's the, when you do that and achieve that goal, you've laid the foundation for your next, your future growth. So I referenced the city saying before, you know, there are, there are all the mildly isolated, very mildly isolated areas. Very rural surrounded.
Yeah, you mentioned something really important about planning for the next 50 years. So where we see the current UGB, we all can assume that in the next 50 years, that UGB is going to move. And when it moves, the first place it's going to move to is probably logically to Hypal or even Folsom, if it really was going quite far out there. That being said, a lot of that land, if it were to be within our UGB, would be prime residential land. And if we're looking to plan 50 years out and we decide to put a wastewater treatment plant on either Hypal or Folsom, we're almost automatically making that an undesirable or less desirable location for that residential growth to expand to. So I, I guess when we're really planning far out into the future, I wonder if Folsom is far enough out there. I guess I wanted everybody else's opinion on that.
I think I made a note in the facility plan that's truly just arbitrary, the part you want to go. The further I was, I think it's a double inch sword. The benefit that anyone wants to develop every wastewater, every community has a wastewater plant. Part of the downside of development. So you can't develop without the wastewater plant. You blank. But you could go further. I, I checked the grades to Folsom and we have a good, good 0.6 slope all the way from, from the campus pump station for Folsom, very nice.
I had a question for you on the Folsom one. You talked about getting rid of the open pit sewage type system that we have now. How is that going to affect, pardon me, the smell? Would that be a major change in how that, that issue has been, you know, such a problem in the past? If that were not to be included in this part of it? Well, the open, the open sewer pits that we have now, you said those would go away if we moved to the Folsom location?
If it were built in any issue.
Yeah. Okay.
The new membrane plant would require you to cover it.
Yeah.
Because you can't already degrade it in needles and that kind of in pot damage.
And my question was, would that help with the smell issue that we have?
Well, it allows it to reflect the smell, as you hear.
Yeah.
And so I think I talked before about the best success we've had in order to control it. We've tried a half a dozen different systems, all the temples, all the organic systems. And the best we have found is just collect it and shoot it up in the air that affects the wind drift above the prelude. So we collect six or seven thousand CM per minute. Have the campus plant made a binder, send it up in the air, we put a bed three at the top of the stack and add another two times or so of flow. So by the time we get it to the end, it's shooting out at maybe close to 18,000.
Yeah. I toured that plant and I couldn't smell anything. So it must be worth it.
I was downtown, had the sludge correct on my experience.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to carry on, because we don't think we actually asked this question yet and I did it originally for us. Have we looked at trying to talk to PGE about possibly moving an effort a little bit? When we're, you know, we have a bunch of power there, if there's a bunch of dinner around the lake or even across the river, there might be some land, but it's not going to be any residential.
We did talk to PGE. I think Denise had a conversation with PGE. Randy Eddy, I think, was our planner, evidently. Because it seems to me ideal, the ideal location, put the plant on the access road to Riverdale Dam. And we can go to, you go to Riverdale and turn on the damn access road and use that higher land right there. PGE was unwilling to do that at all. So I think whatever we do, we do many things. It would be great to talk to them and about the action there.
What if that's across the river? Is that something that's doable? If we were able to find money across there, because there's not a lot of homes on that side of the river.
Yeah.
And they're, they're county property and the department stuff. I've got a work a deal where it's not going to affect anything there, but we can put it across the river.
So you're thinking, you're going down the west side of the river?
Yeah, I'm just kind of looking at the map here. I know it's going to buy a lot of homes and that might reduce impact on potential, you know, future residential or things like that. I, I just took this idea. I don't know if I see the people do.
It makes a challenge, it's a problem, the wastewater plant across the river. And it's expensive to cross the river.
Okay.
I kind of think that the wastewater plant, you know, it's your responsibility. So it's a hard to think of. If it crosses the river, accepting that, taking on what they're going to consider a city's responsibility. Unfortunately. But maybe you could, that'd be great. I think crossing the river is expensive.
Interesting. So from, from the options that you gave us, I mean, the Folsom one, to me, makes a lot of sense. It does. And, you know, I agree with, with councillor Dunsmere. We could look further north. If there's anything up there, that would be great too. But I also feel like a certain sense of urgency as well too, especially given that we've got more subdivisions planned. We've got other annexations coming in as well too. I mean, if we were to get the process started now, what, what would the next step be in, in order to get things going? Cause none of these, Folsom, Hypal, Noble, the industrial park, none of them seem like a slam dunk. The only slam dunk that we have is the existing shop site at this point, which is a good fallback to go to, not ideal, but it is a fallback. So if, if we were to get something going now, pursue Folsom and then we hit a barrier, something along those lines, I, I would rather hit that barrier sooner than later so that we can start working Plan B, Plan C. I mean, that's, that's my input. That's my thought here. I would, I would rather make some sort of decision or some sort of, get us pointed in a direction now so that we can start working on things to see if these sites are even feasible. What, what would we need to do as a council? Are we making that decision tonight, Melanie, Denise? Or are we just discussing and then let's think about it next council meeting?
Yes, we're just discussing and bring it back to the next council meeting agenda and then we'll, we'll go from there. Is that right? Okay. So.
Yeah. I think Paul's got a little bit of something that I kind of agree with. And I, I mean, I agree, it's already kind of hit us. I'm agreeing with you. Definitely, I think pushing out is important, but getting the people's input is absolutely critical. But at the same time, I think when we look at the spots, we should try to prioritize what's our highest priority that we want, want to work through. What's the next type? That doesn't work, what's the next one? And we're going back down to what's the lowest priority and start bringing people in from the community to talk to them. We get that input and then see which one may or may not work because I forget who may have mentioned it, but that's a lot of homes across in Folsom and Hypal. It's a lot of people that, that might have something to say about running a sewer line underneath their home or in the property in that area. So, um, yeah, and I'd be right. I mean, we, we have to get this moving because we're going to be, we're somewhat on a timeline. To get this up down so that, you know, we don't outgrow our sewer system. And it's a big year to get it done as it is. So getting that conversation going right away is kind of. And it's a big year to get it done as it is. So getting that conversation going right away is kind of critical. So. But yeah, I I think we should put that priority on what's most important and our fallback, one of the other, and see the community that's.
Yeah, but I don't believe the pipeline will finish. I think you can negotiate using the pipeline. For minimal impact on farms. And you'll get into some of the negotiating, probably where I find it a dollar amount or a better, better interested in. To get those, but the easement for pipeline is very. It's not intrusive, but they only know if they are after it's done. And we can, we can stay in roadways, of course, but we're certainly never going to go through a house or something. Try to avoid all the fire products, go a lot of test labs on it. But it's a true on that side. That's the challenge. So wherever the green plant is, there's going to be that opposition. That would be, maybe one of. Really, if we were to start a process to see how many roadblocks we would have. We would, I think, start a PR program to explain what we're doing. Notify everyone, but it's only the true on that site that we really need to compare. So getting the pipeline to it is.
Yeah, um, I think we're kind of all on the same page as far as, you know, we're looking at. The majority of us at least are looking at Folsom Road. I too would like to get the community impact. Or the community, you know, what they, what they have to say about it, the feedback. But also. I too would like to kind of have a tier one, tier two, tier three. Sort of like, let's, let's try to do this and then have a fallback, a contingency plan for each thing that falls through if if things do in fact fall through. Because I'm looking at the timeline and yeah, it's. It's getting pretty close and I'd hate to get into a a spot where we're. Going to have to put a moratorium on building because we can't. We can't house any more people here because we're running out of sewage space. So. Yeah, if we, I don't know what would the next step be to reach out to the community around Folsom Road or. Just kind of see what they have to say and then if. We don't really hit any roadblocks and I I too agree with council. The first thing I thought about was that urban growth boundary is going to. Get pushed out in the future. I mean, it'll happen way after I'm gone, but. It's, you know, it it'll happen. Growth is inevitable. So.
And you'll see people. But I have had people contract agents who are interested in properties all the way out. So and they're large parcels, but they're interested in developing. So. A groundy pipeline would be right in their.
Up their interest.
The treatment plant would not. That's really the challenge.
And the treatment plant is, I'm sorry. And that you said that would need. Is that what's going to need the full ten acres or just the two?
Yeah, we we get by with two acres.
Okay, okay.
We've bought a larger site.
Gotcha.
So I mean, at this point, I honestly believe that Hypal Road is out. I don't even think that's a legit legitimate option just because of all of the. All of the houses down there at Paradise Park and then. Every, every property along, along the river there has a house on it. You know, going, going north from Hypal Road. I really think that that option is out because that's going to be a big. I don't think anybody down there is going to want to, going to want. Want that coming out, coming out down there. I really think the only two, the only two legit legitimate options that we have are where we're at and and down near Folsom Road. I think with all of the input that we've already heard, heard from the community over on Farmstead Road. I mean, even that industrial park area is. It's going to be. You know, I mean, that's a, that's a lot of people that have lived there a long time and, you know. Don't want that right in their, right in their backyard. So. I think where we're at or furthest north would be the best option for us.
It looked like maybe going two thousand feet north of Folsom might be. An option to get away from Folsom. Now, what is that improvement I see along the river? Is there a golf course down there or?
Where at?
Just north of Folsom, along the river, that lighter color along the river.
Well, the golf course is is up to. Yeah, it's, it's, it's just. Just north of Hypal Road.
Yep, it is. It's right there. You can see it.
Like right where forty five hundred is written.
Joel, did you have something you want to add?
Yeah, and. I kind of look, I'm just looking at all the houses on the Manhattan Road. I kind of agree that we're going to have a lot of kickback. But like I said, no matter where we go, we're going to be kicked back. We've already got kicked back with just considering leaving it where it's at. We're getting it kicked back and putting on Farmstead. No matter where we're going, someone's not going to be happy with it. It's a sewage plant. You don't want it. Anywhere, you don't want near a river, you don't want near your home, and we're not going to find it out in, you know, a hundred miles from everywhere and put it. So we're not, someone's going to get this off on how it sucks. Or it's on, we gotta, we gotta live with that. But. I don't, I I can agree with Hypal. It's it's a long distance to the river. There's going to be a lot of extra negotiating. There's going to be a pain. So I can agree that probably be the hardest one to go through. My question actually originally was for this, for the city. Can you guys tell us how, what's our growth rate on our urban grounded, urban growth boundary band over the last? And so I'll look for some of the drawing after the U G B. When's the last time we moved it? So we've got to get a projection. We might be looking at for our future growth.
We have a lot of U G B left for residential areas and. The last time we moved it was about twelve years ago, I think, or when we expanded it for the industrial. Park. So that's the only time since I've been here. We added. I think we added a hundred and thirty acres. And that that's, since I've been here in my thirty years, it's the only time we've ever expanded the.
So in in fifty years, you think we're going to hit Folsom Road and.
I. I can't say.
What was our growth rate now? I think we're coming in at six point eight percent, which is unheard of for our area as far as.
Yeah.
So you put that into perspective.
We, we still have a lot of urban growth boundary for residential to the east. Left. So I don't see residential needs. Of course, we'll get our housing needs analysis that will show us for twenty years. And then, but I think right now we're good, especially with all the mill property that we have for commercial and. And others, so.
And if we do hit that, if you do be to hit out the Folsom, that could be on the latter part of the, of the fifty years.
I would, I would think so.
We might be looking at putting a new plant in somewhere anyway or expanding around.
No.
So. I I think this, from what I've heard everybody is Folsom is kind of a top, top dog to go for a good degree.
It's the focus. I I think we could probably, like you said, eliminate Hypal. I don't see that as being a realistic. View there because I know the area I've been in and there's a lot of residential down in there. A Paradise Park, like you said, is really big and if you get a lot of flashback. I don't think that's going to be an option. And as far as the industrial park. I think we have heard a flashback already of that one and on the opposite side, not to mention the fact. That I think my park at this point, those are prime properties going on the market. They're going to be hugely expensive. We've already talked about that. So that might be an option we'd want to stay away from. So the existing in Folsom is really the area I think we should focus our attention. And get started as soon as possible so that we can see what this is going to take.
Maps. And I think that's just a farm. I think it's just a hayfield. It's.
That's, that's ideal.
It's, uh, there's really no houses. Along that whole area. That Eagle Creek Lavender Farm is south. Which might be a place, one of those places might. Want the affluent up to, because we talked about pumping the fluid to the golf course, which it would be. Fairly close, you know, something like that. So.
Right, yeah, there may be people that want your, yeah, for irrigation.
What's our next word up?
Is it, oh, you mean Doughty Road? Doughty kind of goes.
Yeah, Doughty kind of goes up and.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me suggest that I remove Hypal altogether from the report. I think so. I think so.
And we won't, we won't antagonize anybody.
Yeah, we'll keep the industrial, but the the Hypal definitely needs to be pulled out. Just from what I know. I don't think that's going to be an option we're going to be able to deal with.
And just north of Folsom, you've got Eagle Creek Golf Course and then Bonnie Lure State Recreational Area. And State Park as well too. So that's. That seems like that would be. A challenge.
Well, Bonnie Lure guy had a pretty hard flyer too. So that was, that was pretty bad.
But Eagle Creek is one of the places that might want the affluent for watering also.
The golf course.
Uh huh.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me encourage you to a new treatment plant. They're not, not like the old plant. So. We can't actually go the extra step and and cover all the tanks. I mean, we're covering eighty percent of them. We would normally have an open tank or two. For sludge primarily, if you keep it aerated, it doesn't smell. But the process is you shut the air off for a day or two to let it settle and then you haul sludge out. A very, very spend, expendy or very. Smelling operation. But the normal plant, you keep it oxygen, keep the oxygen levels up. And you cover everything and the plant will look nice. So. It'll, it'll be a nice looking facility. It won't really alarm you by having that as your neighbor. Knowing what it is, is going to be more alarming than actually seeing what it is.
If, okay, so I know this might be beating a dead horse, but if we stay where we're at now. If we stay there now, the stuff that you can see from the road is is coming out, right?
You will not see it from the highway.
Okay, so that's stuff that you can see from the road. And i- it, and visibility from the river.
Well, we'll have a fence on that side. So just the elevation difference won't allow you to see the structures. You'll see a nice fence along the walkway.
And we can plant trees. We can do.
We can do anything. And we do have a good stand of trees from the highway. That's why we can hide everything behind the trees. From the highway direction.
Okay. And we're, I mean, we've already established that we're handling that smell issue just by shooting it up into the air. That's the issue is going to be gone.
We would recommend that. It's a good solution.
Yeah, okay.
The challenges we'll still have with that. The challenges we'll still have with that, I want to find out, so we'll be losing, pretty much lose four or five from what the law has been on. And that we lose that entire riverfront for any future development. So we, it's that, that's a challenge. Not to mention. The resident, they'd like it to have a loop out in that area though, despite they won't be seeing their smell. And I thought to some of them. They would not be there anymore.
Well, you got.
We're going to have those kickbacks. Those are the three options.
We got two properties there that there's no interest in developing already. The Forest Service, the Emirate has no interest in doing, doing anything there. They don't, they purchased the property, but there's no interest in actually developing it. And then there's the property next to, next to it, the big open lot. It's owned by Reliance and they have absolutely no. Interest in doing any development in that spot. So.
Yeah, that's currently announced in two years. But we're talking a fifty year.
Yeah.
And now we're shutting off.
And Emirate, a lot of her investment, he's not, he's not going to develop it anyway. He's going to sell.
Yeah, we're talking, we're looking at fifty years. So it's fifty years, again, P G won't get that spot back. So that's what I keep looking at is a fifty year mark.
Let me, let me add two things to that conversation. One is. The other thing you should consider is we're paying eighty percent of the cost. Of providing service all the way to Folsom. So if we do build it at Plant Side, we're going to spend eighty percent of what our cost would be to build it at Folsom. Only we're not providing the service for our expanded urban growth. So it's, even if it doesn't happen in fifty years, it's good to have your plant a mile out of city. You know, nothing wrong with that. In fact, it'd be ideal to. To not get there for a hundred years. Keep your plant away from your residential development.
And so. And this could kind of go technically anywhere. When we say Folsom, the general area.
I certainly, yeah, I certainly don't mean Folsom. Ideally, it looks like if we went past Folsom far enough to just get off the road. Back into the. The developer area would be best.
But but just to chime, chime in, if we go out to Folsom, it won't be the city shop. It'll just be.
Right.
Yeah, so we'll still have the shop.
How far is roughly the city of God in? The document is about five, five miles roughly.
It's about, I would say it's about seven thousand feet to Folsom Road from the U G B line. It's nine thousand feet. To that dot I have shown there at the industrial park.
My thought is, how far is the drive? So the question is, why couldn't we put the city shop there if we need to? If it's not too far to drive.
It's five point seven miles.
That's not that bad. I mean. If you put it out there, we could still do it because I might, I'd still remove some where they're at and still combine them. I think it's a great idea. Is it, is it, is there another reason why we couldn't put them out there? Because having them on site with that as well is a good idea either way.
Yeah, they're just far away from the water plant and I, it's just, I don't know. I mean. I I wouldn't think they wanted to go that far.
I think it would not be responsive. It'd be difficult to be responsive. With the little things that that need to operate the city. I think you simply would need to find another. Little acre and a half site somewhere and put them there. You could, you still use the site for. Public work storage, equipment storage, that type of thing. You wouldn't have to store all that in the in town facility. But for the day in, day out, you're going to want an office, I think, in town. And be responsive by being a mile away instead of five miles. Or bringing them closer out to the industrial area with the public works building, I think would fit. That whole area anyway. I mean, we're talking a smaller parcel. To find one that would fit, there's many different people involved along that area. It's more likely for the public work. So I'm not as worried about that.
Yeah.
But yeah. Okay, well, we thank you. You've definitely given us some clarity. You've done some work here. It's a lot more options than we had the other day, which is good all around for everyone. And I thank you for bringing it back to us. With clearer, more concise information that I can really understand. And know what my options are. I think the council feels better about this now, hearing what we do have and the choices we do have. Are you all comfortable or any other questions you'd like to ask him before we let him go? Yeah, Denise will bring us back to us at our next, or.
Yeah, I'll work with Kurt.
Should I simply hold tight on the document itself or do you want me to clean it up and finalize it for this discussion? And bring it back for approval.
What do you think, guys?
I really want to hear citizen or. I'd like to hear public feedback before making any finalized decisions.
And that's still going to be part of the process, right Denise? That's not something we're, we're still going to have to give public feedback and everything before anything happens in a minute. Is that right? This just starts the process.
Well, this would give you a a long range plan. This is your goal. So there's a lot of hurdles to cross before you get there. And that would be those stakeholder meetings. Yeah.
And that, and that would be okay.
Personally, I really like the idea of exploring over by north of Folsom, especially right where that bend in the river is. And I really love the idea of exploring that because not only is that area, you know, not likely to be developed in the next fifty years, you know, right there at the line of it. But I also don't see anybody else over there currently that's going to be majorly affected. But I would like to meet with the stakeholders of Folsom Road and see how they feel about it being there at the very end of it.
Okay, so Denise, I think we're in agreement. To bring that back and yes, clean that up and leaving that.
Would you like me to clean it up and bring you a document that has it all concise? Okay.
Yeah, so we appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
All right.